All right, Yat Eben, Vice President Lizer here along with President Jonathan Nez, Dr. Profilia Fowler, our health professionals over here in Window Rock and surrounding areas. Good morning. It is June 23rd. Welcome to our COVID-19 Town Hall update. Soon and very soon, we'll be renaming our update here and might be something that we continue on. It's a weekly update to you, our people all across the Neta. So as we do, we always open up in prayer, so today is no different. Let us open up in prayer and then we will have our updates and hear from our President Jonathan Nez. Yat Eben, God, Boney, God, we thank you, Lord. In this week of Navajo Day of Prayer, Lord, we seek you. We ask for your great intervention, Lord, in our hearts, in our lives, and in our minds. Lord, if we all truly pray for a revival, Lord, it first starts in our hearts. So we pray right now that the Lord of the harvest would come and that you would see and answer our prayers, Lord, all across the land, Lord, healing for the land, healing for the citizens, all our people, Lord, and that wisdom, bring forth your great wisdom to leadership, Lord, as we work, as we toil, as we think about and meet about those benefits to the Navajo Nation, the capital, the money infusion, the assets, Lord. For we're reminded, Lord, that all good things come from above, the Father of lights, and that we can access your thinking, we can, for the benefit of the people, ensure every penny gets spent wisely, and that we are good stewards of your financial blessings, Lord. We're reminded that you own all the cattle on a thousand hills, and you say all the gold and silver are yours. And so again, reminding us that we're merely stewards of it. So we thank you again. We thank you for this time, Lord, even though we know many are enduring hardship. Father, we pray grace and mercy all across the land. May your healing come, your sweet healing come. In Jesus' name we pray, amen and amen. And now without further ado, we look forward always, as always, to hearing from our President Jonathan Nez. Sir, you are waiting in the wings.
Thank you, Vice President Lizer, and everyone that's helping with the Town Hall this morning. We have Dr. Jill Jim from the Navajo Department of Health. We also have Dr. Profilia Fowler, who's been helping with the Navajo, with the translation from English to Navajo. And also from the Indian Health Services, Captain Brian Johnson. And of course Eli for monitoring and helping us get the recording out on social media. So another update, as you all know, we used to do these Tuesdays and Thursdays. And now we decided, we decided to have it once a week with the low numbers of cases that we've been seeing lately. So thank God, thank you to all your prayers Navajo people for the hard work that you all are doing. Those of you that are listening live on KABR 107.5 FM from Alamo, New Mexico. Yat E, good morning to all our relatives in Ochin, oh no, that's Raymon, Alamo, from the satellite communities, Yat E, and many others that are watching and viewing on social media. Good afternoon, or I'm sorry, good morning. Eda Smith Castillo put, "Good afternoon," so she's probably on the East Coast. It's 12:16 there. And also Veronica Scott from Yanabet, New Mexico, Helen Lake, good morning. Raymond Keyswood, listening from Trote, Shiprock, or Farmington, don't she? Up on the San Juan River, it's probably a lot cooler out there than it is in most places, especially those of you that live next to the waters. We are in a drought, and so be careful with, you know, fire. We're going to be going from stage one to stage two soon, and the fire restrictions, so be careful out there. Good morning to Chris Bennett from Mini Farms and Miranda Nez, good morning. So we've decided to do these Town Halls once a week, and we decided on Wednesday midweek to give you an update. Of course, we see the low cases in our community, right, of COVID positive. And Lydell Raphael, good morning, brother, from Farmington too as well, and your listeners. So say hi to all your listeners on K-Indian. So I'm getting a lot of texts and messages now. So low case counts lately, you know, one death is one way too many, of course. But we've seen some days where there's no deaths, and thank God for that. And so it's easy for us to let our guard down since we've seen some low numbers in our communities. But please, ladies and gentlemen, don't let your guard down. Those of you that are not vaccinated, we encourage you to get vaccinated, please, because these new variants that are around, in and around the nation, if you're vaccinated, the public health experts, the healthcare experts have said that if you're vaccinated, you, the body, can push back on the virus, the COVID-19, and the variants. You've heard in the news that the Delta variant is starting to come closer to the Navajo Nation. There was a report of the Delta variant. The Delta variant is more contagious than any other variants, still COVID-19, and also makes you even more sick. So but again, the healthcare professionals have said, and they see it, if you got your vaccine, you know, you're not going to get as sick, or you may not get sick. And so we encourage our Navajo people to get vaccinated. 12 to 15-year-olds are getting vaccinated. The last report I had was about 30% or so of our 12 to 15-year-olds getting fully vaccinated. So good job, young people. I know you all want to get back to school and to, you know, get back to hanging out with your friends. And if we can get more of our young people vaccinated, you know, the better it will be in the schools, I truly believe. So Eli, if you could put up the first slide, I know that this is repetitive, but again, you know, this information is key and transparency. I don't want someone to say, "Well, you didn't tell me, you didn't tell us." This is why we do this every time we come to you in a public, in these types of Town Hall meetings. So since the start of the pandemic, over 30,000, to be specific, 30,972 of our Navajo people caught the virus. And those that have fully recovered, but you know, that means there's no COVID in their system, 29,581. But that doesn't mean that they're 100%. We have some people who have gone through this virus, but they have some long-term health problems because of it. And we want you all to know too that our thoughts and prayers go out, go out for them, for their recovery. 1,347 of our Navajo people have, you know, lost their lives to COVID-19. So in 24 hours, five new cases and one new death. Let's continue to pray. As Vice President mentioned, Navajo Days of Prayer are coming. Of course, we're praying all the time, but for us as a nation, we are supporting a three-day event for prayer, specifically for moisture, for rain, and for the healing of our people that have gone through COVID-19. When I say healing, that could be physical healing, mentally healing, because you got some people out there, and maybe I'm talking to you today as you feel guilt. You know, when we've been going throughout the Navajo Nation, people come up to me and say, you know, "Sorry, President, we're not listening," or "I didn't listen," and that's, maybe that's why my relative in my home caught the virus. So we all caught the virus, and maybe someone passed away, or someone has some long-term health issues. And so they feel that they are the one who brought the virus back, and then because of that, someone passed, someone that we love, or someone still going through her. Please don't feel guilty. This is an unseen virus that has come into this world, into this country, into the Navajo Nation. We're all in this together, and we're going to pray for you. And please reach out if you need help to the Navajo Division of Behavioral Mental Health Services, if you want someone to talk to, or you just go to a local church to talk to a pastor or a medicine man, you know, our traditional practitioners, to talk. And it's good to talk about these things, and so that you can help in the recovery aspect, because you don't want to, you know, walk around or not address this right away into the future, because it's long-lasting if you keep it in. And then you have those that feel guilty for people that got sick and they have long-term health problems from it, you know. Let's help each other out. This is going to be probably the next stage of COVID-19. Even after we get through the public health emergency, there's going to be long-lasting mental health and maybe even behavioral health issues from it. And so let's not blame each other. There are some people that are blaming their family members for bringing the virus into the home. Please, let's not do that. We didn't know what's going to happen. We did our very best to push back, and just don't blame yourselves. And then we did our very best in government to give you all the information needed to fight this virus, to battle these outbreaks in our community. And so keep your eye, pray for one another, and talk to one another as a family too, so that you don't have some family issues in the future. It's all about healing. That's what this Day of Prayer is going to do. We're hoping and we're praying that God will, once again, intervene here on the Navajo Nation. So the next slide there, Eli. As you see the chart, the PowerPoint there, you see the entire ups and downs of COVID cases throughout the public health emergency from last year, 15, 16 months now. And you can see there on the right-hand side, all-time lows here lately. But again, don't let your guard down. Please don't let your guard down. Wear your mask, wear your mask everywhere you go, you know. Yes, there are people that are passing through. We don't know where they're coming from. You know, we got variants spiking all over. If you go to the next chart there, Eli, it shows the states that have seen some increases in COVID cases in the last seven days. And you see that the top one there, Wyoming, is number one. And what they're saying is, these are people that are not vaccinated, that are catching the virus. And so let's encourage our Navajo people to get vaccinated. The top red one there, the first red one on the top is Colorado. Colorado is seeing an increase in the last seven. It's been like that for weeks now. And then right after the second one down, right next to it, is Utah. And then you have some states in between. The third red line down is Arizona. And the fourth red one is New Mexico. Now, the yellow one is the Navajo Nation. You see some states in between there. And you see now, before, the yellow and all these red ones in the four-corner states were down below, we were at the kind of bottom of the list. But overall, these seven days, you see it go up, all of them, at the same time almost. And so that is the reason why we're asking you all, those that haven't gotten vaccinated, don't be fearful. I know there's a lot of things that are being said out there. We get vaccinations when we're babies, when we're kids, measles, mumps, and rubella. We don't question that to our young people. And we get flu shots, some of us on an annual basis. COVID-19 is around, and I think COVID, I hate to say it, COVID-19 may be here to stay, just like the flu. And we're going to need to, you know, take care of ourselves out there, because, you know, we've seen that some of these states, their emergency declarations are going away. They're demobilizing their public health emergency stance. We're not doing that here on Navajo. We're still requiring mask mandates, because we get a lot of visitors, and we just don't want travelers going through. We just don't want another uptick here on the nation. If you go to the next slide. Next slide, next slide is the COVID SARS strains surveillance. These are the variants, and I know some of these names have changed using the Greek alphabet. You know, we used to call them, well, they probably still get identified, and like the first one there, the Alpha, the B117, it started off as the UK variant. 21 cases have been identified in Chinley, five in Crown Point, 13 in Gallup, one in Kanta, three in Sage, 16 in Shiprock, CO2 Medical Center, Service Unit 0, Tubus City 12, Utah Navajo Health System 3. In total, 74 people, you know, these are random sampling. It's not like every one of them gets, every one of the positive cases gets sent off, no, just some of them. But it gives you an idea which is the most prevalent in the Navajo Nation, and that's the UK variant, that's 74, it's everywhere. Now, the Beta, B1351, the Beta is the South African variant. There is no known cases here on the Navajo Nation. The Gamma, P1 and P1.1, is the Brazilian variant. And that, there, there's three in Kanta that were identified, one in Utah, that's four total. Epsilon, the B1427/429, and that's the California variant. That's most prevalent here in the Southwest. One in Chinley, three in Gallup, five in Kanta, one in Sage, five in Shiprock, four in Tubus City. So 20 total there of identified here on the Navajo Nation. The Delta variant, the B16172, that has yet to be identified in on the Navajo Nation. But as you know, they start popping up, and the closest one I, the last update, was in Tucson, Arizona. And we've been hearing some reports, I don't know if it's verified yet, but the state of New Mexico might have identified the Delta variant as well. So be very careful when you're out there traveling. That's what we're, we say, the safer at home is the best thing to do. And if you need to go out, you know, again, just go out, buy things in big quantities so you don't have to continue to go to the stores or go out as much as you can. If you go to the next slide now, this is a comparison between the US and Navajo Nation of COVID-19 vaccines administered. Now, as I said before, we are doing our very best to identify, get the data for the Navajo residents, so people actually living on the Navajo Nation, and get that breakdown. So there's reports, you know, I've used 70% a lot, you know. Shiprock Service Unit has 71% of their adult population fully vaccinated. So that gives you a general idea that we're up there. And usually, and Shiprock is the biggest service unit that has done vaccinations. And so we are asking our healthcare facilities throughout the Navajo Nation to give us the updated vaccination numbers or the data, so we can report it to you. As you can see, the chart there, US 100 and, I'm sorry, 379 million total distributed. And I asked this question this morning, this also includes the Navajo Nation numbers too. So like some states, New Mexico, Arizona, and Utah, get a big increase in their percentage of vaccination using the Navajo Nation numbers. So they boast, like New Mexico boasts about, "Well, we're already way up," they're using our numbers too. So that's something to always keep in the back of your mind when you're, when you hear these things. Percentage administered, you see it there in the US. So I'm not going to go through, you see it there in the US, but I'm going to go through the Navajo Nation side. The Navajo Nation, 249,605 total doses distributed, total doses that have gone into the arms of our Navajo people. That's 240,395, that's 96%. So let's run out. Come on, everybody, let's use that 4% up, so we can order more and get more of our people vaccinated. Number of people fully vaccinated, that's two shots of Moderna, two shots of Pfizer. two shots of Pfizer, one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and three. And just remember that this also includes non residents of the Navajo Nation. You know, a lot of our Navajos live off the nation. And they come back to use the eight service units here on the Navajo Nation. That's also including them. That's why I'm saying I need to, we need to take out the data for Navajo residents only, those of us that live here on the Navajo Nation, because that helps us get an idea of where we're at and uh if we're ready to reopen. You know, our goal was seventy, seventy, seventy-five percent. Uh user population fully vaccinated, that's fifty percent. Again, that's everyone. Uh Navajos living off the Navajo Nation. Uh eligible user population fully vaccinated is sixty-one percent. Uh and number of people, one of two doses only, thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen. Number of people at least one dose, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen. There was a big up, uh a lot of people, uh uptick in in people getting vaccinated. It's when the twelve to fifteen year olds were uh allowed to get their their shots. So many of them are gonna be getting their second shots in the next, uh while they already did. Uh but a big chunk of them are gonna be getting their second doses in the next one to two weeks. So that's gonna boost our numbers here and fully vaccinated on the Navajo Nation. And the last slide there, uh judi kwa uh baho shn baho shnagi e li islati nha hotzogo otsa del khargila oh di di ne na alsa alsa nezna di nha thra nezna di ne dobaan sos tzed sos tzedin dobaan hast e damil soh anelt ah e hotar e ya azee islati nha hotzogo bijekoliya. So e hotar e ya nihikene nihidoshing otthra di nha daaz tsegi do otthra ochotar de yotthra akoba daaz tsegiya eh uh thad di no thra nezna di dobaan sos tzedzata damil soh doba la anelt ah ekon ba daaz ts e islati nha hotzogo di denevi kiabukau kehui tini gi e nakia nezna di dobaan des di dobaan nahast e damili ya jidobaan hastha nezna di dobaan isla anelt ah ekon azee nihijekoliya. Uh e choz inigi e ya na nakia nezna di dobaan des di dobaan thra nezna di do nahast e di dobaan isla anelt ah ekon uh di azee nihijekoliya gi choz in ah do lae nakia nha daaz ts nakia nha daaz tsegiya e alsa nezna di dobaan isla zata damili ya jidobaan nakia nezna di dobaan thra anelt ah ekon nakia nakia de nha daaz ts so hotar e uh uh hehda nihidi ni do lehla kon la ekon nihikene nihidne ah ato ba daaz tseta ah mado ye che masan anadlno lini gi ashrona kodon nha altshen ah bijekiya daaltshia di nha daadoh tseta hatno jukka di ha e di nahlnegi dakhosun thragi nahast e zata ah e gi bedzata la na nahlne e inle trona nde kujitna na ya na nahlneo e oye go bahaz zeta no akon de nha daadaz tsigo e ya do ye go e uh kon di uh dakhosigi uh ye go e uh hananat ido lehla do ni jo e binina e kodon uh nha daadaz tseta di no isjog bateni kechkino lini aro uh and and then the concluding one is we're in week nine on the yellow. Uh that means we've been in yellow status for nine weeks and nine consecutive weeks. So at some point, we're gonna have to go to green level. And once that green level comes up, that seventy-five percent occupancy. Uh, we did veto the parks reopening bill at a hundred percent. Uh and that parks reopening bill would have not uh been regulated by these public health emergency orders, in our opinion. And so we're we're not ready to open up at a one hundred percent. We don't know where these visitors are coming from, right? We don't know where they're coming from. You see like Moab and these National Parks Grand Canyon, they have a big uh increase in visitation. And that's gonna be the same thing that's gonna happen here on Navajo. And if we allowed at a hundred percent reopening, uh you know, that's a concern to the healthcare team here. Uh fifty percent and regulated and keeping your mask on, cause some of these uh uh visitors, you know, they're from the other country, all over the country. And we don't wanna see this new Delta variant come into the nation. But we are, uh you know, we are supporting at least fifty percent reopening, but the council has to resend the no visitors on the Navajo Nation resolution. And of course, we want them to resend the virtual only for schools as well, so that we can reopen our Navajo Nation schools uh at a certain, based on certain guidelines. And maybe open it up for summer school so that the schools can learn uh and abide by these guidelines so that in fall for the new school year, they'll they'll be able to have some experiences on regulating uh their schools, uh utilizing the guidelines for COVID nineteen. And chapter governments were asking for the council to resend that, you know, they they made it only five people to consec- uh to to have a quorum. And you know, five people approving resolutions in your local chapter um is something to reconsider. It's supposed to be twenty-five, fifteen to twenty-five quorum, or if you're a certified chapter, you're able to do it with your uh council. But you know, I think it's time for us to reevaluate that and take that back so people can uh participate in their government. You know, we did a public health emergency order that says twenty-five people can meet again, but you you know, you have to wear your mask, you have to social distance and all that. And we've done that uh with the government too as well, so. Erihan oh hot ah shinkon sohanne nihijekonane isla do deshi kero shina adetaisnotsang. Thank you for watching and viewing our updates and take care of yourselves. The Delta variant is getting closer. Not to scare you, but we just need to be on a heightened heightened uh uh you know, we have to be vigilant, let me put it that way. Wear your mask, uh social distance and you know, we're also having town halls. We had one for USDA for loan forgiveness for ranchers and farmers. We had a FEMA town hall, letting you all know there's money available for reimbursement for burial assistance if you out of pocket, uh burial, uh supporting uh funerals. We did last week, or this past Monday, rental assistance, those of you that need to, maybe you got uh back uh with your rent uh or utilities, is that available? And then next Monday, we're gonna have the FCC Emergency Broadband Benefit Program, which will give you information on how to pay for your internet. Uh there's some subs- subsidies available to pay you for your phone, things like that. So these are programs that are available out there, and we just want you to know about these programs. Um and so that you can get the the help that you need. And then, of course, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, projects are being put together in our lists. And we will be moving that forward on infrastructure projects for the Navajo Nation. So thank you so much, and I appreciate the uh the Vice President's work on the uh the Economic Recovery Work Group, uh talking about economic development, uh to keep as many of our Navajo citizens here and to shop here. Let's turn the tide, ladies and gentlemen. I mean, we learned a lot to buy local and to also utilize our uh stores and and our businesses here on the Navajo Nation. It starts with us, starts with us. So God bless you, take care of yourself, have a good week, and turn the time over to our Vice President, uh Mr. Myron Lizer. Take it away.
Oh, yeah, Mr. President, I appreciate that. Thank you for your updates. Thank you for your leadership as well. And yes, buy Navajo, buy local is uh something we'll always adhere to. So thank you again for uh being a great proponent of that. Yeah. And Yatev Bennett, all those out there, Vice President Lizer here, Comanche Nishlan, Tohanem Ashischin, auto Comanche Deshichay, Ash Deshanelle. It's good to be with you all here on this June twenty-third COVID nineteen Town Hall update. So as I always do, give updates around about the surrounding areas around here, what it's looking like all around us. And President handles all of our nation's uh numbers, updates, and um uh vital information uh for this COVID nineteen pandemic. So we appreciate him and the leadership, but also uh right after me, we'll have our esteemed professional cast of health professionals to give us their latest, starting with Dr. Jill Jim, our Executive Director of Navajo Department of Health and um many others. But um first things first, um as the United States and the Navajo Nation is overcoming the COVID nineteen pandemic, we wish to express our utmost appreciation to the businesses that are out there who are providing safe protocols and for their customers and their workers and are adhering to the guidelines. The uh they assist in bouncing back and and uh helping our economy to better bounce back uh while protecting our citizens' health. So it's an all hands on deck mentality that that many are uh pursuing. And we are overcoming because of that. So we appreciate them. In the United States, more more abroad, uh the United States has fully vaccinated one hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sorry, one hundred and fifty million people against the coronavirus, marking a major milestone in the fight against this pandemic. Unfortunately, the US is expected to fall short of President Biden's goal of getting um at least one shot into the arms of our citizens of the United States of seventy percent of the US adults by the Fourth of July. As you know, Fourth of July is just in a matter of days here. But um as those new variants are spreading rapidly, you just heard from our president, uh the latest for the Navajo Nation with regard to those variants. So continue to be vigilant, shit and then be safe out there. Um news, uh Arizona news, uh more than six point three million have received a COVID nineteen vaccine, uh their doses, uh they have been administered in um Arizona with around three point five million getting one dose and nearly forty-nine percent of the state's population uh one dose and the rest, uh over three million fully vaccinated. So Arizona is um kind of by and large, uh mostly been vaccinated, um almost uh I I believe uh the population is over six million in the state of Arizona. Um so uh total positive cases for the last sixteen months, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand and twenty-three with four hundred and ninety new cases. So still hovering uh there, uh so with some high numbers, again statewide numbers. Apache County, eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six with six new cases to report. Navajo County, sixteen thousand, six hundred and eleven with eighteen new cases to report. Uh Coconino County, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty with ten new cases to report there. So you can still see our numbers are still hovering about the same, you know, single digits into the double digits in the low teens, high teens, but uh still uh looking um uh very well as far as what we used to see. So continue to be safe out there again. Colorado, um Colorado has the second most Delta variant cases in the United States per health officials. The Delta variant is considered more contagious, as you've heard, and could make patients even sicker than the first versions, first variants, uh which makes vaccination more important than ever. So according to Health Colorado Department of Health Experts, uh total positive cases in Colorado, five thou- five hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-three with three hundred and eighty-three in new cases to report there in Colorado. Uh Utah, yesterday, New Mexico Department of Health reported over one million new Mexicans. Sixteen and above are fully vaccinated with the state reopening on July first. New Mex- was proud to report on the progress made in all of their communities and cities there. So uh total positive cases in the state of New Mexico, sixteen months into this pandemic, two hundred and five thousand and fifty-eight uh with uh one hundred new cases to report. San Juan County there in northwest New Mexico, fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty uh cases, yeah, sixteen months in the last sixteen months with twelve new cases to report. Gallup McKinley County, total positive cases, twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-one with one new case to report in their Gallup McKinley County. So good job there. Utah rounding out the tri-state area here that touches on the Navajo Nation. Uh COVID nineteen cases are going up among younger Utahns um as the highly contagious Delta virus uh variant of the virus continues to spread among a population in the state where less than half of all residents have had even one dose of the vaccine, according to the University of Utah Health Experts. So there you could see how the the vaccinations are playing out and the results uh and lack thereof for those that haven't been vaccinated. So continue to see high numbers amongst the younger generations of Utahns. A total positive cases, four hundred and twelve thousand and nineteen and with two hundred and forty-nine new cases. Uh San Juan County there in southeastern Utah, total positive cases, one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four with no new cases to report. So good job there. And the Navajo Nation Utah Health System there on the nation, total positive cases, one thousand, one hundred. Looks like they have one additional case there to report there. And so lastly, as I get ready to close and um get ready to present Dr. Jill Jim here, um be vigilant about your whereabouts, right? Just like President said, and and now VP saying, and and now you're gonna hear some more from Dr. Jill Jim and our health professionals here, Captain Brian Johnson, uh among those, and Dr. Pfeffelia Fowler, uh again, um being able to interpret in in a language there, um what, um you know, can we do? What should we do? And you'll hear encouraging words there to that and backed with sound data that we're seeing. But a new study shows that children's birthday celebrations could be partly to blame for the deadly rise of COVID nineteen in early twenty twenty, this is last year, uh on the early onset of the pandemic. Researchers look at anonymous health insurance data of two point nine million households from the first forty-five weeks of the year, two thousand and twenty to see if such gatherings were linked with higher cases of COVID nineteen transmission. In in county- in counties with higher rates of coronavirus overall, households that had a birthday during that time saw a thirty-one percent relative increase of COVID nineteen as the average jumped thousand individuals. But those households with children celebrating a birthday, that number was nearly twice as high, an increase of over fifteen point eight percent. So you see, you know, even as we're in a pandemic, the need to even consider, you know, uh celebrations, birthdays and the like, uh especially now if you've not had a a vaccine to uh refrain or to do whatever you can, double mask, you know, wash your hands twice as much, hand sanitizer, or you know, to stave off any uh potential contraction of the virus is the stay home. Stay safe, save lives. But we all know that we all each come with a measure of faith. We all have a measure of confidence and um we need to just continue to be vigilant about where we go and what we do, the things that we touch and and then, you know, purchase and whatnot. So and I know many of you, the majority of you are very diligent about what you do. So as leaders, we have to exaggerate our message, uh giving out sound firm data and based on research, based on uh how the data is collected, but also to make sure that um everyone all across the land, then it's uh that you get the information that is vital. It potentially could save your life or someone else's life. So. So but we appreciate all of you who have been vaccinated and even those that aren't. Continue to maintain, continue to stay atop the latest information and we're all in this together. So yeah, our prayers are still with you and for you all out there, all of our people across the land. Shitane, we love you. We'll continue to pray for you. Reminder that this is the, at the end of the week, we'll be observing the Navajo Nation Day of Prayer. So stay up, study up, research up, pray up, right? Let's just prepare our hearts for God, Creator God, Dea and God to move on our behalf. So we thank you again. And now without further ado, I'd like to introduce Dr. Jill Jim, our esteemed leader there, leading the way and leading the charge for our Navajo Nation Department of Health. Take it away, Dr. Jim.
Yes, Vice President, thank you very much. I always like to hear all your updates regarding COVID-19. So yeah, and also for President Nez as well, yeah, for all your comments regarding the messages to stay safe in this day and age, we are still in a pandemic and we just want everyone to still get vaccinated and ensure that we are still keeping our numbers low and we are all doing a good job. But at the same time, as mentioned, during this call, that we still have to stay vigilant just because of the unknown, a lot of these mutations have become a threat to the United States and the world. So with that said, I think there has to be just that recognition that we need to understand that what we do is to protect ourselves, our elders, our families and also our relatives here in the Navajo Nation. So I'll just introduce myself in Navajo and thank you again for Vice President for introducing me and the Division Director for Navajo Department of Health. And to transition back to English, so I might as well be a little bit briefly issued a public health emergency order last week. We continue to see firsts that are in yellow for on our ninth week. So we're doing well, keeping our numbers in the yellow status. We don't have high hospitalizations. We have low positivity rates and we have enough contact tracers here on the Navajo Nation. And so for those reasons, we were able to issue out some more Public Health Emergency Order 2021/12 last week. So I'm just going to share some of these here in regards to the Public Health Emergency Order. There we, we are now in a safer at home and so we're not required to shelter in place. That was rescinded as far as shelter in place. We're at safer a home now. And we're also looking at increasing gatherings as well, but what remains is also the curfew. Curfew hours are still in place from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And so in-person gatherings are now allowed. And so I'm going to go over these two items. For these are just acknowledging that we're, that this is now allowable in the Navajo Nation, the in-person training and meeting guidelines. So just as a reminder, this is a general recommendation to the public. There are requirements within your own entities or organizations you work for, if you're curious. You also have the three branches under the Navajo Nation Government, under the executive branch, they have a separate in-person training and meeting guidance. So similar to this one, but just understanding that this is specifically for the general public. So we give recommendations. So strongly so encourage hybrid meetings and also continuing to just not to exceed the gathering requirements, which is about 25 persons now regarding rights to meetings. Also attendees attend virtually, that will be fine. Also making sure that it's less than six hours or less and also encouraging everyone to get vaccinated, especially among individuals that haven't get vaccinated. Also, another thing is just to continue to adhere to the practicing the three Ws and these are going to be included in all of those reopening guidelines, of course, washing your hands, social distancing, making sure you're following CDC guidance, also pre-register if you can, do online registration. All attendees of an in-person meeting may utilize text or QR codes to avoid any sign-ins sheets as well. No food will be allowed, but bottled water and drinks. And then if there is lunch provided, they can be prepackaged to go and eat in elsewhere outside or in your vehicle possibly. There's no suggestion on where, but I think what they're avoiding is the indoor eating. Hygiene and safety, of course, cleaning doorknobs, anything that's highly visible and touchable during the time, such as microphones, and also making sure that any physical distancing is done when there are presenters and speakers in person, making sure there's no overcrowding, so limiting individuals to the 25 and also realizing on the space issue. So just because you have a small space doesn't mean you have to squeeze 25 people into a small room. So just kind of make that decision. If there can't safely distance six feet and there's poor ventilation, of course, it's not going to be recommended as well. So all attendees must be seated or remain in their seats. They can make sure there's a one-way avenue of going in and out of the meeting room. And then so this is helpful. We also are now allowing and encouraging the 25 persons for outdoor recreational events. And these are events that typically happen during the summer because then weather is warm and also that people out there wanting to exercise. And so the days are longer, of course, but with the efforts that we're doing so far with vaccines and also the low numbers, people can host walks and 25 per persons and also runs, bicycle races, motorcycle rides, rodeos, trail rides and other similar events. And then powwows and song and dance are considered under traditional ceremonies. For attempt revivals refer to the reopening guidelines for the religious organization and places of worship. I don't know if that's been updated, but I would need to follow up the safety team on updating for the revival section. These are only recommendations for a one-day event and typically outdoors as well. So making sure there's an open shade and canopy. Another thing is the heat issue that we're experiencing. So just be cognizant of that. Ensure adequate staffing. So your 25 people will include your staffing and spectators in most cases. So making sure that you are including not individuals, not, it's not 25 participants, it's 25 total. So motorcycle rides also have different limits and rodeos, volunteers are all included in one. It does succeed, may need to happen in regards to that. Who can attend, of course, and trying to make sure that there are safety protocols that are in place and all of the recommendations that we've been saying, the three Ws, making sure there's signs, making sure there's screening, physical distancing, and also the same thing with food and drinks, making sure they're to go as well and then cleaner work or safety, what to do and then also reporting cases. So if you're doing events out there, please make sure you look at all of those avenues. So those are the guidelines that are posted on the Navajo Department of Health webpage. You can also access that on the Navajo Nation webpage and any social media. So in regards to the 25 persons, there is now 25 persons for social gathering. I talked about the traditional ceremonies, 50% for houses of worship, but they have a 25 limit for the Bible Studies School and they have to follow the in-person training guidelines on how to make sure they continue to conduct safe practices and in order to prevent any COVID transmission or outbreak is the intent of that. So those are the items on the Public Health Emergency Order and you can go on the Department of Health webpage. I just want to encourage everyone just to understand that, yes, our numbers are low, but there are new threats that we all need to just be cognizant of. So wherever you go for you to, continue to do safe, safe, safety practices that you do. I know our Dine people, our relatives, thank you for wearing your mask when you're out there outside the Navajo Nation. We all set a good example of following these recommendations that we know masks are very effective. So I'm going to hand it over to Captain Brian Johnson. He's our team member with the Health Command Operations Center and he's with the Navajo Area IHS Office. Take it away, Captain Johnson.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Jim. Really appreciate the information you shared this morning. Appreciate the handoff as well as we continue our fight against COVID-19 here on the Navajo Nation. I want to also thank President Nez and Vice President Lizer for their leadership and specifically on these Facebook Live sessions, which I believe is very critical to getting information out, being transparent with the public about things that we're seeing, things that we're hearing, things that we're experiencing as a public health officials working with Indian Health Service, working with our tribal health organizations, as well as working with the states, our surrounding states. So it's been very helpful to understand just exactly the direction the Navajo Nation has been going over time and appreciate the hard work and partnership on these items. Again, this is Captain Brian Johnson. I serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service and worked beside Ms. Roslin. So as the Area Director, Dr. Anne, as well as Dr. Loretta Christensen as a Chief Medical Officer at Navajo Area Office in St. Michael's, Arizona. Been here throughout the pandemic and again, have learned a great deal along the way, but have enjoyed the partnerships that we've developed and just strengthened over time. And I just wanted to basically reassure the public, the listening public out there today, that we all continue to work together as the healthcare team and the public health team here on the Navajo Nation. And whether we're working for the federal facilities, whether we're working with the Navajo Nation directly or working with our tribal health organizations across Navajo Nation, we're all working together to make sure we're doing what's right and make sure we're getting the information out that needs to be provided to the public. And as a part of that, we continue to meet on a routine basis, generally by phone call, by teleconference, video conferencing, and we do continue to talk about things such as the gating measures that we've talked about now for months on end in just talking about what are the gating measures showing us? What, what is it that we're seeing that gives us the clues of how we should proceed or not proceed in some cases? And specifically, some of those gating measures, as many of you are aware, include things such as the case numbers. What are we seeing in terms of COVID-19 disease transmission here on the nation? Is it increasing? Is it stabilizing? Is it decreasing? And so that's an important clue in how we should, or how should we, we should handle our next steps in decision-making. Also, we look at COVID-19 test positivity rates. So if you or your family members have gone in for testing, maybe you just had symptoms consistent with COVID-19. Maybe it came back negative, maybe it came back positive. Well, we do track the testing positivity rates to understand how many positive cases are happening on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, so that we have a big picture idea, again, of the decision-making that we need to make. And then also we continue to look at our hospital capacity, looking at the number of beds that are available for inpatients, looking at our intensive care units, looking at our emergency rooms to make sure that we have the capacity to, to provide the services needed in the event that you or your loved one become ill. And so we do that on a daily basis as well. Also, we monitor the number of contact tracers that we have employed across the Navajo Nation. And these are the folks who really monitor closely any positive cases. They make contact with positive cases to make sure that they have the information they need to make the best decisions for them and their families out in the communities. So these are just some of the gating measures that, that we continue to monitor and, and will continue to monitor moving forward. So I just want to reassure the public that that is still happening. Certainly with COVID-19, it's one of these things where it's, it's, it's not that it just becomes, comes to an end and we walk away. We know that we're still having a certain number of cases each day, each week. The numbers are lower than what they were previously. However, we do know that from time to time, we will see a spike in cases or an increase in cases. And we make sure that we're working as a team, a healthcare team, whether we're in Tubus City, whether we're in Crown Point, Gallup, Shiprock, Chinlea, just across the Navajo Nation. We make sure we're working as a healthcare team to address the cases quickly, to make sure we're making contact so that we do not allow additional cases to become, to be turned positive over in a short amount of time. So it's very important that we continue to do that. Again, I, I always, in recent months, I've stated that we continue to be at a critical point in the pandemic, in the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think it's easy for a lot of individuals to think, well, we've gone through, we've, we've gotten past the main hurdle of the high, high, high level of cases. However, even though our cases are much lower, we still are at a critical point in the pandemic because if we do not continue to be vigilant, if we do not continue to just remain watchful and to make wise decisions, then we can see increases or spikes in cases happen, which is something we definitely do not want to happen. We want to stay on top of it and we want to make sure we're giving the public the information that you need to make good decisions at home. I'm not going to go over some of the things that Dr. Jim and President Nez and Vice President Lizer went over, but I, I, at least in any detail, but I will still touch on some of these things in general. And that is that one of those being that we remain in the yellow phase, of course. And, and of course, what we're trying to get to, as President Nez mentioned, is the green phase. And the green phase means that there's less restrictions, that things are more open. But for now, we continue to be in the yellow phase and have been in that phase for the last nine, nine weeks. And it's important to understand that in, in order to get to that green level, we have to have some consistent decreases in our case numbers and in our testing positivity rates. That's really what we need to happen in order to get us down to the green phase. And so we continue to share messages of what you can do as individuals, what we can do as family members and friends across the Navajo Nation, pay care of one another. And that's by, you know, talking, by making sure that we're all wearing our masks and, and continuing to follow those hygiene standards that really, really does help prevent the transmission of COVID-19. I also just want to mention, and I, again, I'll, I'll skip some of the information I was going to share today, but because some of it's already been covered. However, I do want to make sure to mention, I want to make sure that folks do understand this, this concept of COVID-19 variants and what we mean by that. In the, in case we have individuals listening that are not familiar with this, basically it's a, you can think of it as a different strand. You can think of it as, you know, you'll hear the term mutation. And it's basically the original form of the COVID-19 virus that first arrived has different types, there's different types of it that are a spin-off of the original variant. And, and these variants are being studied closely. Again, you can, again, you can think of them as mutations or just changes, slight changes in the original virus. And in some cases, the, there's, there's been lots of questions about, are the vaccines that we're receiving, are they effective against these variants? And generally speaking, if you And generally speaking, if you, in reading the literature, it does demonstrate that the vaccines are efficient for these variants that we're seeing. And it's very, very, this is a very important point here in the pandemic as we are seeing several different types of COVID-19 variants or mutations that are spreading in some cases quicker and making some people more ill, particularly those who are not vaccinated. So getting your vaccinations, even if you have not done that yet, the message that I want to send is it's still not too late. If you've held off on your decision-making and you would still like to get a vaccination, I, we still continue to highly recommend that the public get a COVID-19 vaccine. And it will help fight the battle against the COVID-19 virus in general, as well as the variants that have also come along over time. So please think about that. We know that we're seeing in certain states, in some cases, the states around us. Here on the Navajo Nation, we are seeing increases in certain viruses. The example that has been talked about today was the Delta variant. And that one is of concern, I know. And again, the best thing that we can do as human beings is to get our vaccinations so that we can reduce and possibly prevent the impact of COVID-19 on our health if we do have that vaccine. The other thing that I want to continue to message to the public is that COVID-19 testing continues to happen at all of the service units and service areas here on the Navajo Nation. The testing is very, very critical to the public health staff and to the medical staff understanding what exactly is taking place with COVID-19 on the Navajo Nation. So if, for example, you live on the Navajo Nation and you feel like you may have some symptoms that are consistent with COVID-19, we highly recommend getting tested. You can call ahead, you can just show up, whichever that you would like to do, and you can request to be tested. And they can certainly, your local facility that you utilize, health facility, can assist you with getting tested. And I can't stress or emphasize enough, but testing tells us several things. But two of the most important things it tells us, number one is, where are positive cases happening on the Navajo Nation so that our public health workforce can be there to support the public and to make sure that we're working with positive individuals who are positive to isolate, to get appropriate treatment, those kind of things, so that we do not continue to spread the virus. And then secondly, it tells us, what type of virus is it? Is it, what mutation or what variant of the virus? And that's going to be important as we continue moving forward with trying to fight this battle with this particular disease. So please, don't hesitate if you feel like you should be tested, even if it's a question mark in your mind, if you're just questioning, should I get tested because I have these symptoms? My suggestion is yes, get tested. We want you to do that. We want to provide that service so that we can support the community in stopping this virus. And again, I stressed in this particular conversation that our COVID-19 vaccine is the most important tool in our toolbox. Whenever we talk about fighting this battle or trying to remedy this situation, COVID vaccines are the most important thing that we can do. Continuing, we're continuing to receive vaccine deliveries. We have ample supplies, we have sufficient supplies of COVID-19 vaccine. That's not been a problem at all. If you need it, we have that and we will continue to offer that and have that on hand. And just making sure that people do understand still yet that with the 12 to 15-year-olds, basically 12 years old and up, can be vaccinated, just please, you know, show up to our facilities, call ahead. If you want a schedule, that will work out just fine. But we continue to have vaccination clinics here on the nation. And we continue to support that, those efforts. So basically, what our goal is, is to get the most individuals vaccinated that we can. If the higher the percentage of the population that we get vaccinated, then we feel that we can reach what's referred to as community immunity, meaning that we hit a certain threshold in that it's very, very difficult at that point for the virus to continue to transmit whenever we have a large percentage of our population vaccinated. And it's felt that that percentage is at least 70% that we need to hit. And we're close to that, but we need your help, we need the public's help. We need each family member to provide support and encouragement so that we can continue to increase that percentage across the Navajo Nation. Also, I just want to mention that I know that during the pandemic, a number of our healthcare services, our clinics, that were more elective-type clinics, were shut down or closed during the pandemic. As many of you know, some of you may have gone to the local hospitals or health clinics or attempted to during the pandemic and noticed that there was, a number of services were shut down. And those services were shut down for your safety, basically, to make sure that we were following appropriate infection control processes. We did not want to contribute to the pandemic in terms of causing increases in cases by having individuals at the health facilities when it was unnecessary. So I just want to mention that if you haven't been back to your respective facilities, many of the clinics are at this time open, reopened, and there are certain procedures and policies that were required to follow. But information is available at the local health facilities. So please be aware of that. I just want to also say, I guess, in closing out here, that some of the important takeaway points for today is the number of cases of COVID-19 on the nation is staying low at this point. We're very fortunate for that. But we need to continue to remain vigilant. We need to continue to monitor, to be watchful of what's going on in our environment. So it's a great thing that the numbers are low, but that can change quickly if we're not vigilant in following the prevention standards that we've talked about over the last several months. So please continue to do that. We are monitoring the variant forms. When I talked about the mutations earlier, and that's just the different types of COVID-19 virus that are out there. Again, I use the example of the Delta virus. It's important to understand that those different variants are out there. And the vaccines are effective against those variants as long as you get vaccinated. We also wanted to make sure that folks understand we need to continue wearing our mask on the Navajo Nation. That that's a mandatory of the public health order. And we need to continue really focusing on good hand washing. That's really important, as well as the testing that I talked about, getting tested. If you feel that you need to be tested, please get tested for COVID-19. And then, again, continuing with the vaccinations. What our goal is, is to bump up or increase the number of individuals who have received the COVID-19 vaccine so that we can reach community immunity. And when we do that, we'll be protecting not only ourselves, but we're protecting our family and protecting our elders as well. So I'm going to go ahead and stop there and I'm going to turn the time over to Dr. Fowler, but I do appreciate the opportunity. And just remain vigilant, everyone. We're doing great at this time during the pandemic, but please continue to listen to your public health officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Johnson. Yat e shekaylo shidneh. Shee padon idish eh chi adon ma idish kisni en shloh thurichin ibash chin. Kapah hatash shei adon ashcheedash analeth thodus ahol yere. Arei isuch shekay. Koka e ya she naan nishnaat itra haot zangir. Ko kado e ya. Panahol jish koden chen iishchana edel eni gi. Ado kado lta e ya muretein leadership. Ah, selip dang Nez, ado she yaar. Vice President Marlon Lizer. Ko ana thla ihehe. Ado oho na hiu hi nat ani nochnini. Itulad ede nat ani nochnini. Mihi lta shnechi ado izael ije. Dei nochnishi ado tala tala chin. Ado na hone izael ina izane ka oho na hiu. Ado dei nochnishi. Ado amado yze'eh et shey analeh. Eda'ah amaya jeda nochnini. Ado mafal chenin leni turkej dekhe. Baol thcha'ita dan leni dah ado tenejji. Benad ani dan hi deneh. Ado na hone eh thnaaz naleh. Oho na hiu eh lta do eda'teh di ya ndeski di. Eh ta ba iheh ney si. Ba iheh ni tsin kodo nat ani neleni ya iheh ni tsin. Oko hala behes ani leni bi kahanaheni. Eh ihehe. Oko kodo hi nat ani eh ya mahasneh. Oko di izel leni nacha daal yaay na kineza chino. Adis deina anast eh de meh ya'ja. Eska Nezat deina ashla akunen. Eh izel leni nacha al ya. Ado eh kitcha koliya akoba taas ci di. Izeh ba al yaay ni hi deneh leni na kineza deina de. Deis dey de meh ya'ja daa ka Nezat deina anast eh deina ashla akunen. Na eh izel leni nacha al ya. Oko a chij bata al ya'ji do. At fully vaccinated dekneh. Eh kada e ya adat Nezat deina ashla adah de meh ya'ja daa na kineza deina. Adha. Oko kada ani tsom izaei nacha analeh. Oko do yen dan thokha. Izaei leni bahazlii nacha da dor ni dan kineh. Ado di ati ketsoy gi bi ikha. Oko kadas eh de mo izli. Hone za hon za go e ya. Ketsoy bi ikha. Konde do yji eh bi ta di kha ni tsin do. Nacha, jo ba'i ni tsin do nacha akha ni tsini benach e di ne. Oko di beda dirlnai do beda dor naani ye go ya'atzah. Ado di nda'al khahe ati nda'al kha. Ado di contact traces dey leni. Cha da bedilnae eh ishtla. Adjeh nda'al kha hi hona. Ado di izael embernahas agoh. Hospital capacity dey lena. Adjo do di. Asha abes o beolcha. Oh, eh di, eh tost do ma'ash tla. Ya jo ado beolcha eh nahas. Eh. Oko di izel leni analeh eni gi eh ati analeh. Ado di kodo shekay e ya hazzei gi eh di behes ani hana da diliyay di. Nda'an nishkodo ashla nta'al kleto. Otahoh ahoh ek ashahoh anandaya. Okonde behes ani leni bichada de tao eh di. Ko depart of health adi ya nahasneh. Ado di koo de hindai tahi do. Koneh nekoda. Adjo do shahoh anandaya. Eh she kodo nacha ba'akonosil do le. Ado di ni kodo, eh mihi izaei. Eh. Ado mandat ah leni. Eh, Brian Johnson. Eh she kodo. Adjo da stano ba'tcha nahashneh do le. Eh di kodo eh yoheh. Nihi lta di nat ani nochnini benabet haot soj. Eh eh di kodo di hota. Na kede mo, ashla de mo be. Na kijun, na kido. Na kijun na do de gijun na ndelina. Kha eh di ashla ha'deh. Nacha andeli. Eh di tcha'da mo guneh eh hota eh bernaho hota. Ko e benach eh di kodo. Ishta'ah zen do. Eh eh hanana. Be be kodo nihi lta hanepel ishtan'ah zeni eh be. Ba iheh ni tsin. Ado ohiu di. Bit ado etahui. Ah ye go nanhi Nez. Thna nihi deneh. Oko di. Adetahonahani do dan hi rando dei nochnishi. Eh ye go di kodo izaei. Embernahas agoh. Adi ye go berdei ni leni. Ado a kuijeh eh ich ashla deitleh. Ado di naan na'al kha hi gi. Lta do a kuijeh ben lihi lta hanepel. Oko di nahani hi gi cha'itah eh denortzes. Cha'itah e ya adon ni. Jo eh benahuit. Ado bi kesa di i, di ti nihi lta. Ado di nda'al kha hi de kuijhi beda dirlnai. Eh do ochanela eh ashla jeda bedor na. Asha de mo do bedor na. Adon le nda hedizig ochanela eh beda dirlna. Jo eh nde eh ni kha hobanek. Ado di izaei embernahas agoh. Doni, eh kaya bakha'ot di nda'al kha hi do. Ba iheh ni tsin do ati nda'al kha. Oko eh do hashineh na o ati. Ashla nta'al kleyo adachanachni eh ba'akon ni tsin nihi lta. Ado na koneh e ya. Ah ni ohiu go be kadi kado gi nihi ne. Okonde ya ani he e ya ani. Okonde. Ah ye go be etah akwaliya do be kesa do i. Beni ye hulon go eh lta do nahonachha. Ahoh ma de isad ati itsana chaya at eh di do. Eh di kri guneh da'ndakron nihi lta. Ado alalat. Be behanadeh. Behanadeh sey di nihi sey doni chi ashrona. Abetada deys banu na. Chay. Hala di de kosn tanast eh tsadabedi leni. Lta do. Be elil. Jo hot ado wajeh. Di be elil hulon ni nahani. Ado hashineh na eh be chi tabedi ne. Eh eh benach eh di nahani hi ye go. Edelno et eh ay ye go. Skilhonal do do ye. Skihon ilcha do ye. Hatsado. Bit ado hadchahni krihi. Et eh jo oko a ashanod ni lta. Oko eh benach eh ne. Koden hi na dindalni hi. Jo benihi tsado lta eh ni tsin de chadachaden xi. Lha hananani. Okonde ado eh ko ashla bahanneh dan de. Jo ado honeh da di izeh bahazli nihi deneh. Ashrona shekaylo shidneh nacha da do tsit. Oko di izael embernahas ano ati. Nda'al kha ati. Ba, um, deil kha. Jo ne. Ado di, um, be elil. Bede leni eh do ati nahal kha. Izaei ina ohiu. Adi nda'al kha. Oko di ahani ya ani. Ndeh be etah akwaliya donan nihi lta. Ado di eh. Um. Nihi izey doni chi abetada deys ban. Ado di nihi izaei ina dei ni leni. Nishijeh. Adjeh eh ati nda'il kha. Do ati nahani hi benach be etah akwaliya do. Be etah hanosin jo nihi lta. Ado di kodo. UK variant eh leni jo eh a don. Lha nahani hi be elil. Bedes leni. Hashineh na koe ednihi tahanani. Oko di Delta variant eh. Ahon koe epohanet dan deh nihi nago eh nahani. Okon jo eh di behes ani leni bi kahanaheni. Jo nihi lta. Oko shisa zino eh kada na. Nah chado benach jo eh di. Ah nda'ejnishi gi eh di kada di de mo izli. Itha nda'ejnishi di kha. Ya ishtash chile bi ikha. Oko nahayeh da'ta hanahol jisho. Itha banso kez. Itha eh ato izeh bahalehta. Ado di ohiu nihi taa ye go de deski. Itha nahayeh da. Eh nenat ah panahat na'tashidoh nihi. Shin dejjo na antjenet. Itha ado di izeh ze benan sozo. Izeh ze hadas chay. Oh chon nihi honestli. Okonde belasi khegi eh ba iheh ni tsin. Oko. Oko ohui. Ah eh benachni. Do ani kiso zige. Belagana ek jo eh define yourself nihi lta. Reflect on your mental health and well-being. Akot zidik hatzi lahan se kezi. Ohiu chenna yini gi nihi ne. Oko shkua'etsad leni be kha. Um, do. Do hot eh hot eh ina da jiltke do le. Kodo tala enun hi natani leni. Hajojeh eh etah. Chay ado ahatche elaj. Danhan. H'jo't, e'at'acht'ke, ado, a'ach'se, al'aj', n'da'han', n'dan, n'dan'ol', a'ja'ton'ny'tz'ne. Chal'at'ah'ats'insen, it'ah'cha', no'szen, n'ch'lni. Sa'hal'eho, e'op, um, l'hat'ho'benach'vi, aho'. N'dle'da'a'tsa', n'saha'kesi, kui'nana'lo. Ako di'ka'a'andal'ne, oh, yu'go'a'andal'na', ba'na'alte. At'een, a'andal'ya, di'resources, be'dini, oh, be'ken, non'ne, net'ole. Ako, oh, yu', di', nan'esh'blnhahas'ago, ke, k'at'edol'waxita, yo'ke. So we have a lot of places that are reopening. And when we get to our resources, we know we're gonna overlook it because it's gonna be a fast pace. But what we're telling you is that we have so many places that are looking for employees, help wanted, or hiring, that, b'ka. Ro'e'an, hin'na', ni'te'k'k'do'se, ya'hi, yat'ke, recovery plan, y'tz'ne. Ch'as'e, nan'eshi, do', be't'ni, ni, ton'be'ti, l'ish. Ashi, e'nii, l'hat'ho', be't'ni, ni, de', n'tak'on'esh'e, ni'tzen. So healing takes time. Di'ko'alt'a, be't'adi, k'ek'i, na'tzihi, a'ni, ch'inh'ach'ah, no'st'la. So we have to build on our confidence. Yat'e, h'jo'ona'ol'ta', e'nitzen. Ado, h'jo'e, nan'ash'ne'st'ho', ka'e, h'jo'ona'sa', b'ka, nan'ash'tado. Jo'a, n'ch'ehot'a, ban'si, k'as', e'nach'ya't, e'shik'e'ro'sh'ne. Ako, k'do', b'anta'i, ni'ka. G'isei, don'hi'tchi, be'ta'tades'bal', d'af'ne'sko. Cha'go', da'sla'go', da'da'cha'go', e'do'a, hot'a. N'ch'illa, da', k'hal'wo'sh'to', t'chot'se, z'lar, be't'ham'ta'. Gi's, ado di', it's, um, alte, n'ch'cha'and, da'sch'pita'di, n'ini, e'do', be'keha'no'le. Ado, yu', da'ach'in'ohni, do', a'ch'edil'os'zen, shik'e'ro'sh'ne, di', adon'hi'tz'alt'ho', da'. Ako, cha'in'ohni. Ako di', k'ad'hi, n'da'in'ish'gon, na', eto', demo, yas'ho', demo, kondi, e'di, uh, three-day prayer, y'tz'ne, so'dez'inni, b'ho'a. E'shi, it's, um, ant'chen'ch'ehon'ni. Hash'ine, la', e'a'a'egui'ja'n, so'dez'inda'do', ne, e'do'hyeha. L'hat'ja, be', an'sh'to', t'i'li, don'jon'da'al'ho'. Ro'e di', k'at', uh, n'che, oh, n'che'od, la'don, n'che'oh, l'i'li, l'an'te'hi, benach'ja. Cha'a'ye, op'e, e'hit'a, e'di, s'oldo', di', nahal'ch'inni, be'khat'so'dez'zi. Ado, ya't'ehon, n'ch'lahui', do', a'ni, ch'is't'ka. Ya't'ehon, nah'ho', do', a'ls'hon'edon, ch'edell'ni, go', na'di'ka. Ro'a, s'hon'ep'et'cha', i'ni, j'no', n'ch'edol'li, ro'e, e'shi, k'as', da'had'ez'ni'tzen. Ado'a, n'ch'hi, et'a, ach'it'ha't'el, ro'dan'ch'ide'ni, nde', nach'e'st'kui'do'sani. Na'tani, j'no', k'at'a, kui'ja'di, y'ch'ha'hi, be'y'ka'and'al'i. Jo'grall'hi, da', ho'wa'de, ama, a'ya, et'cha', en'ale'ta'da, j'no', ro'e'n'te. E'en, shi, l'hap'et'ah'os'i, za', akhonde. Ro'e, k'ad'hi, demo, uh, n'da'in'ish'gon, na', l'hap'et'ah'ho'a. Ado', isei', be'nahag'aja, da't'had'iti, n'da'el'sos'ja, da'. Ado', da'h'ne'eh'go', da'e'a, di'di, da', um, n'da'in'ish'gon, na', ak'o'a, a'ja', l'hat'ho', be', n'sht'had'ho', l'hat'ho', uh, so'dez'ind'od'si, j'no', son'sh'e, e'k'ju', l'hat'ho', e'da'hos'zen. Ro'e, k'ap'el'ho', a', a'di'shi, et'a'than'ad'ad'ez'zi, n'ch'ide'ne'eh, ba'do'a, da'n'ch'hi, et'a. Ro'chot'e, hi't, e'shik'e'ro'sh'ne, ko'k'do'e'ya, k'ol'ts'ag'ashim, ba'nahas's'net'oleh, ado'a, ni, ati'nal'ni. Hash'ine, la', s'kui'sani, ts'ke'di, k'ek, n'ch'it'ah', be'ke'na', da'st'it, n'de. Ro'cha, cha'och'ani, do', sa', be', cha'ah'onnini, be'ech'ya'da', ti'eh'il'ka'and'at'ja. Oh, da'al'tre'ch'el'na', be'h'at'cha'ya'na', ho't'eh'le. Hash'ine, z'at'ach'na'ja'tsh'and'eh, kui'ch'ana'hu'it'ho'. Ro'hash'to', et'a, ado', leh, shik'e'ro'sh'ne. Ts'eda'an, ch'ini'ta', be't'ni, n'ch'itz'ha'to', be't'ni, n'ch'itz'ilo. N'j'no', na'ol'ta', ho't'ek'ad'eh', naho', i'to'. Ako di', isei'tna', isei'tnacha', et'al'ya'do', n'j'no', a'ni, t'chon', isei'tnacha', el'ya'go', n'ch'at'ho't'ho', et'e. Akhonde, be', be'ech'ilt'ah'hol'ne. Ado', k'do', n'ch'emas'ani, n'ch'ich'ain, n'ch'inalen, n'ch'may'aj'ni, ta'ta'ta'te'hi, h'jo'be', e'shista'hol'ne. Ado'a, a'ach'se, do', ado'a, an'let'ke. Da'n'ini, oh, ohayuy, akhonde, n'ch'ahl'ts'ne'e, ol'cha'oh, do't'ath'ho', h'jo', oh, kui'do'l'ha't'ani'tzen. Ako, hash'ine, la', e, ho'wa'de. Ol'cha'oh, y'ines'ten'a, ita', hash'it'e, shi'e, at'ho', yin'ten'da. Ro'a, al'a'ani, t'e'do', n'ch'iti, n'ch'ina'ant'chen', al'a'et'e. L'ha'e'ya, k'ad'na'ant'ch'ne, ado', k'ud'nan'esh'na'te'nit'ka. Ado', hash'ine, la', e'a, n'ch'ee'nit'ze. Akhonde, ro'al'a'ani, t'e'oh, h'jo'be', n'ch'ilt'ah'hol'ne, do'. Ol'cha'j'indall'ne'shi, do', h'jo'ni, n'ch'ina't'a, n'lini. A'ja'be', n'ch'ilt'ah'hol'ne, el'ts'ni, lini, al'a'et'e. K'ju'la, ohol', a'egu, e'as'ep', k'ju'la, a'ched'ed'nes'kni. Ako, h'jo', n'ch'ilt', a', ba'ban'so'kes, on'j'no', eto', ni, lo't'e. Do', el'ts'ni, w'el'ye'ni, la', alal'ad'ja, ba'do', k'hos'ol'eh. Ba'ho'do', ba'ho'do', a', do'. Ba'ya'j'lt'ke, ba'nah'aj'ja', a', e', n'ch'ea'a'ja', n'ch'has'la. Ako, a'ashin', k'do', be'n'ch'ita'han'anas', it'oleh, shik'e'ro'sh'ne. E'egu, cha'da'in'ohni, do', yu', da'ach'in'ohni. Sa'ya't'e, be'ech'ri, et'a't'hit', n'ch'iz'ad'ho'. De'nido', edell'ne, a'ja'bin'da'hol'as', shik'e'ro'sh'ne. I'd like to thank all the listeners at this time. Uh, thank you for listening to our town halls. We appreciate all of you. We're doing well here on our Navajo Nation. We do have some differences. We do have challenges. But at the end of the day, we're still family. We have to love one another to overcome this pandemic together. We may have some disagreements. We may argue, but please, at the end of the day, we're still family. So please take care of yourself, continue to wear your mask, continue to social distance, continue to respect one another and love one another. Let's all get vaccinated and let's all have faith in one another and pray every day. We, we do have many events coming up. We want to continue, uh, talking with you and providing frequent updates through our town hall. Thank you to leadership. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, for your prayer this morning and every day. Appreciate.